Hello, it's Bill Whitner.
Good evening.
Okay, Phil, I think, I think we've got everybody now.
Okay.
So, I'm gonna share my screen and so you can open the meeting.
Okay.
Can everyone see my screen?
I'm not.
Okay, alright.
I think I'm unmuted now. I was beginning to think that my husband paid somebody to not unmute it.
I see John Burke's still muted.
I thought I heard John Burke before.
He did, he was blaming my dogs for barking, but it wasn't mine because I was still muted.
The little symbol on John's screen is showing it muted.
Shayna's is muted too.
I think she has hers muted herself.
Okay, no, she doesn't.
You can mute yourself if you want to.
Okay, she doesn't, she didn't do it herself, she said.
Oh, Shayna's muted.
I'm not muted now.
Alright, I'm good to go.
Can you see my screen now?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, are you ready?
Ready.
We're meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Of the United States of America.
Okay. First, I'd like to reflect. Okay.
You're probably gonna have to.
Yeah, mute everybody again. Okay. The public comments. If you'd like to make a comment, you can place your name in the chat box. When we open the public comment, we will unmute the participants' microphone for comment. Once you have finished your public comment, we'll mute the microphone again. And public comment will be heard in the order they were received. Before we do that, I'd like the minister to reflect. We had three executive sessions. One of my way of. For the administration to give us an update on the status in the district. That was probably after. We were notified by the governor. And we also, at that point, decided to cancel the March 26 meeting. Limitations on public.
Phil, are you on your phone and the computer?
No.
No. Phil, there's a big echo.
I'm not sure why.
Mary Jean, can you try muting everybody except for Phil?
Okay. The second executive session was by way of a virtual meeting using this Zoom. And that was to get another update on the status of the district, what was happening, what the administration was doing. That sort of thing. An update of what the district had found out from Department of Public, Department of Education, from the governor's office. In PDE. And then we had a third virtual executive session on March 30th. Again, to get an update on the district's status and we were in regards to the governor's orders and PDE's information. And that's when we scheduled this board meeting for tonight. By way of the virtual meeting on Zoom. Okay. Now, if we have any public comments. Type in the chat button, your name, and we will unmute you to get your question or your comment.
No.
Are we getting any? Okay. In that case, we'll move on to item four, Business and Finance Reports. Do we have a motion to approve the Business and Finance Reports? One through six or anything else differently?
No, I'm unmuted now. The echo will go away if anybody who's not on mute has headphones in, so it's not repeating back and forth. Just saying, in case the echo becomes a problem again.
Okay, do we have a motion for the Business and Finance Reports?
Motion approved.
Do we have, was there a second there?
I'll second it.
Shayna says she's still muted.
So we have a motion in a second. Can we unmute?
I have a question, Phil.
Sure.
Um, is Shayne on?
Shayna's, Shayna is on.
No, Shayne Powers. Yes, she is. Okay, my question is, with the school closures. Are cyber and charter schools going back? And are they gonna be up and running and are we still going to have to be financially responsible? Paying to them or are those kids coming to us? How is that gonna work?
The Act, this is Shayne, the Act 13 legislation that was passed last Friday. Indicates that schools need to continue to pay cyber charters per the enrollment effective March 13. So, they are under state order to be closed at this time. Similar to brick and mortar schools. And they cannot be enrolling new students. So, what we have been instructed is, when we receive the next round of invoices internally, we're going to do a check to ensure that the enrollment has not changed. And that it is the same as the enrollment effective March 13.
Okay, what about our kids that are like at New Story and they're out of district placements are, do we still have to pay out for them or?
Yes.
How are we going to cover them?
Sure, my understanding is that the expectation of schools is that they continue to pay school entities. So, for example, if we had students at the IU or at another program such as New Story as what you're indicating. We are expected to continue with payments during, during the closure period.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
Mary Jean, is Rob Perry unmuted? I know he's here, but I don't know whether, I haven't heard him yet. Mary Jean. Is Rob Perry unmuted?
Lori, just to clarify that, the rule is where you were enrolled on March 13th is where you are enrolled.
Okay.
Okay.
Alright, so we're gonna be paying all tuitions as we have prior to this happening.
Yes, but as far as the kids that are in placement, we have asked those facilities to please provide us with a plan. And we wanna see if the plan is adequate.
Okay, perfect, thanks.
Any other discussion, questions? Okay. We have a motion in a second, roll call please.
You have to unmute Carolyn.
We're working on it.
People must really be bored if we have 228 participants. It's like the biggest board meeting in the history of Dunkanic.
No.
Can't get her. I can call roll.
Yes, Phil, why don't you do that?
Okay, Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Arnold?
Yes.
Ms. Gregory?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Dr. Perbola?
Yes.
Ms. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. Whitner?
Yes.
Mr. Farr, yes. Okay, we'll move on to the superintendent's report.
I wanted to just update you, we did our third food distribution last night at the high school. We gave out 1,300 Chop bags. It was very successful and we're really pleased. I cannot thank Chop and the produce, children's produce market efforts enough. They have been just wonderful and going above and beyond. I wanted to announce to the public, so everybody knows that there will be another food distribution next Tuesday night, 4:00 to 6:00 PM at the high school. And this will be a children's produce. So, this will be more perishable items. And you do need to pre-register. You can do it by calling my extension, which is 836-3111, extension 1,000. Or on Facebook, if you go to our intermediate or our primary page on our website, there's information there that you can register directly. With the people that are organizing their end of it. So, I wanted to let you know that as well. I did prepare a PowerPoint presentation for tonight to update the community on what we're doing as far as our educational options and opportunities effort. And if you just bear with me, I'm gonna pull that up. This was rolled out to our faculty. On Tuesday. And I modified it slightly for parents. I just want everyone to know that there have been a lot of people working very hard behind the scenes. And now we've handed over to our faculty and they are working very hard. And so, I just wanna kind of give you an idea how we organize this and how we see it rolling out. But we will be providing enrichment and review materials at this time for students during the school closing. And I underlined enrichment and review materials for a reason. At this time, that's the path that we've taken to go down. We do not know how many kids will access this opportunity and how many kids will not have access to the opportunity. And it's important for us to realize that as we begin, that we're going to be reviewing materials and we're going to be enriching the materials that the kids have covered. And so, the teachers are gonna be providing that. If the, if the direction from the state were to change, we will be ready for that. We're going to be in a platform that allows us quickly to move from enrichment and review to direct instruction. And that was part of the reason that we, we took the extra time and the extra care in choosing something that that can last throughout however long we need this to, to last. So, all the activities will be selected by a team of teachers and they'll be available to students through an online platform or printed materials. Just for the board's information, we have had a request for over 300 Chromebooks for kids that don't have devices. And we've been asked for about. Oh, we've been asked for about 100 paper and pencil packets. So, we're working on that as well. During the first phase of implementation, we're only gonna be developing courses for the four content areas. So, ELA, Math Science and Social Studies. Kindergarten through fifth grade are really just gonna focus on math and reading and language arts. So, Phase 1 went into effect on March 31st. And I see that as going through this coming Monday, which is April 6th. So, in the first phase, step one, we chose tech leaders in each of the buildings and we trained them this past Monday. So, they've been established in each of the buildings and these are the folks who are actually on the front line, they're gonna be providing tech support, not only to our teachers, but also helping our teachers help the students. At the primary center, we chose Harry Quinnon and Becky Tong at the intermediate center, Annette Shreve, Ashley Napoli and John Joseph. Seventh grade STEM Academy, the tech leader is Debbie Johnson. And at the high school, Jason Keown, Cindy Klein, Rob Kuski and Sarah White. Mary Beth Howell will be the tech leader for special education, any kind of troubleshooting that needs to be done there for specializing curriculum. I cannot say enough thank yous to these people. They have worked tirelessly, many, many hours. Jason Keown has been at the very back end of this, the side that I never see and I don't understand. And if it weren't for him, we would not be moving forward at the pace that we're moving. He's, I have to give a shout out to him. And all of these people though, have worked many, many hours this week. And they have really produced something that is quite impressive. So then our tech leaders will teach our grade level teachers and, or I'm sorry, our core teachers. And that will happen, actually, they're gonna be doing that tomorrow. So, the next phase, the next step in Phase 1 was to train our content experts. So, we went back to each building and we identified grade level or content experts. So, at the primary center, in kindergarten, we chose Sue Williams and Sheri Drumgell. Stacy Bevan and Kami Puzo at first grade, Fay Ziegler and Becky is also, Becky Tong is also a second grade teacher. And then Karen Wisegold and Marlene Aiken will be handling the needs of special ed students, cases two. So, these people then took a look at courses that the tech directors had, had put together roughly and they refined it. Knowing, being experts as to what has kindergarten done this year, where did they leave off, etc. The same for each of the grade levels. At the intermediate center, we chose Ashley Napoli, Alyssa Wells, Heather Holdridge and Mary Futz and Kim Thomas will provide learning support. And DiMarco Nolan Robinson for fourth grade. Mary Hurst and Sarah Spoko will provide learning support. Tina Kubal and Vince McLean and Brittany Facet and Daniel West for fifth grade. And Sarah Erga and Ashley Lewis and John Joseph, Marcy Higley and Nicole Tena will provide learning support in sixth grade. In the seventh grade STEM Academy, Melissa Klavski and Sheri Brown for ELA. Jolie Bach and Bob Barkley for Science and Math and Ed Judge for Social Studies. Courtney Leitaker will provide learning support. So, these are like the leaders out there and I put their names up there because they, they really have rolled up their sleeves this week and they've worked with our tech leaders and they have developed courses for us. At the high school, all of those four tech leaders at the high school were each assigned to a designated department. And with related special education teachers. So, they have also been hard at work with department leads at the high school. The third step was to train the grade levels and departments. That actually is taking place tomorrow. So, the content experts and the tech leaders will train all the core teachers tomorrow. So, all of the people who have, who teach the core courses, the four core courses throughout the district will be trained tomorrow. And then we're gonna deploy the student devices. Again, we've had multiple. And I have a slide on this later, that, that how we're gonna deploy these things, that plan will be in place tomorrow. And we will be communicating that out to parents whether or not they should pick up their Chromebooks on April 6th or April 7th, not 3rd, sorry. Then, Monday and through Wednesday of next week, we will roll out what we're calling community training. So, there'll be links on our website for how students can access the Edmentum platform. And how their teachers will be communicating with them. And that will be available. So, as soon as we put the Chromebooks in the kids' hands, then we will, we will roll that out to the parents. That'll come out, it'll be announced when it's live on the website, it'll come out in an all call. So, I see Phase 2 as beginning next Monday. So, we're gonna get things up and running. And then the second phase will take place between April 6th and April 15th. And I've imposed that deadline on us because we need to get Phase 2 up and running. Phase 2 is to establish the expectations for our electives, our specials classes, our CTC classes, our English Language Learners, social emotional learning and Title I services. So, we need to figure out, what are, how are we going to use these, these classes? What are we going to offer? So, as of April 15th, whatever your kids are getting next week, we hope there will be more. There'll be more of the specials and the ELL and the CTC courses. We also need in Phase 2 to establish expectations and how are we going to, how are we going to provide related services? And when I say related services, I'm referring to speech and OT and our mental health services, some of which have, that have been going on. How are we gonna use our guidance counselors and how are we going to make our nurses available? We have to figure these things out. I don't have an answer yet. But we will begin working on this Monday. Then, by April 15th, we plan to launch our electives and our specials, our CTC courses. We'll figure out what we're gonna do with social emotional learning and our Title I activities. I set that deadline so that all of us know what we're working towards. It is subject to change. And then I see Phase 3 as being the last half of April. And what I want to start, begin to accomplish at that point is, we're gonna continue our academic support through printed materials. We're gonna continue our technology support and our teacher support. Our teachers will be meeting on a weekly basis. They're going to be planning, what is the next, what are the next activities they're gonna push out to kids? You know, making sure that they're being equitable, that kids are getting the same access to the same materials and the same help. Looking forward, we need to start thinking about our scheduling for next year. We need to start thinking about our 2021 calendar. We need to start making decisions about staffing for next year. So, these are all things that have been put on hold essentially during this unprecedented time. I just want parents to understand a few things about the platform that we're pushing out. We encourage students to participate and complete these activities, but I can't mandate that. You need to determine in your household, depending on what's going on, depending on, on who needs what. Whether or not you're going to require this, but I cannot, I cannot mandate it, you can. So, I just want you to be, to be very clear because not all of our kids have access to this. So, I can't say everybody's got to do it. I want you to understand that the quantity of work is not designed to replicate in any way a normal 8:00 AM to 3:00 PM school day. I promise you that there is nothing that we can do online. And we can do a really good job online. But it will never replicate what these teachers do and the relationships that they have with your children every single day in a classroom. So, I want, I want our expectations to be the same on this, right? This is not as good as TASD opening its doors and having your kids come in every day. But it is the next best thing. We are not pushing out a quantity of material that's designed to have them sitting behind a screen for eight hours a day. What we're pushing out to you is, is activities that will keep them learning. Activities that will keep them sharp, activities that will challenge them. And that's what we do. We recommend you set up a routine where they're, they're doing this on a regular basis. But they're not gonna have to sit there for eight hours a day. That's not what this is designed. You can expect that weekly resources and suggestions for learning are going to arrive with, to you somehow every Monday. And then you need to establish through your household, depending on the number of devices that you have, depending on your schedule, what that learning is gonna look like and when it's gonna take place. They'll send the information via the portal, through Classroom Dojo, I know some of them use that. And I know some of the high school teachers use the Remind app and the parents really like it. So, how you get that information will probably depend on the teacher and what you have available, but they'll, they'll communicate that to you. The first deployment of Chromebooks, and I say the first because after we push this first 400 or 500 out on Monday and Tuesday, I believe that we will probably do a second deployment at the end of the week because word's gonna get out and people are gonna struggle and we're gonna get more calls. So, if you didn't get the deployment in the first, if you, if you didn't sign up for a Chromebook for this first time for Monday and Tuesday of next week, there will still be available. There'll be Chrome, there'll be another deployment available. Now, because we've had, we've had to change what we thought at the beginning of the week. We thought we would be able to provide a Chromebook per student. The demand and the call for these things has shot up so significantly that what we're going to do is provide one device for every two students with a maximum of two per household. And then families are gonna have to decide how are they going to allocate their children's time online. So, we'll schedule a second deployment of Chromebooks if needed. Here's another thing that is, it's really out of the box and I know it's gonna be hard for, for parents to wrap their head around school this way. But grades will not be recorded in the traditional sense. So, teachers will be able to provide your kids' feedback. And in some cases, the platform will even have a scoring rubric. So, they're gonna get a score. So, you're gonna know how they're doing, they're gonna know how they're doing. But that score will not go back and be recorded in a teacher's grade book. Likewise, attendance will not be taken or, nor will it be recorded each day. The platform provides a great deal of flexibility for families. Like I said to you, you may have to set up a schedule in your house where, because of your, your own personal situation, where they're not working every day, but they're working every other day. It's not fair to the kids. We've got too many situations out there. We've got too many kids who may be in a situation where their learning is not supported. So, we're going to assume that everybody is doing this every day. So, we're going to assume that everybody is doing this every day. The last 3 weeks have really been a challenge, and they've been a challenge for you as parents, for teachers, for members of our community. There are still a number of things that I do not have guidance on. So, I want to give you, so that questions aren't coming into me tonight about some of these things, I want you to know what I still don't know. I don't know about 3rd marking period grades. I don't know about end-of-year grades. I don't know about graduation. I don't have a plan right now for kindergarten registration. I do not have any idea what the financial impacts of this are going to be on this district. I do believe they're going to be substantial, but I have no idea what they are right now. And I have not set the remaining school year calendar. If the board decides, again, we're awaiting some clarification from PDE and from Parisburg on all of these things. So, I ask you to just sit tight. I know that the ambiguity is really hard, but it is our situation right now, and more clarification is supposed to be coming out tomorrow. When we started this process 3 weeks ago, I felt like we were building the plane in the air. And in some respects, we still are. But I will tell you, there is no better air force I would rather have behind me than the faculty and the administration of Toncanic Area School District. These guys are doing a phenomenal job, and they will do a phenomenal job. So, Phase 1 was building the plane in the air. We're entering Phase 2, and it's going to be like eating soup with a fork. It's going to be slow, and it's going to be messy. I, I really hope folks can, can anticipate that. This is new to everybody, and we are doing our very, very best like you are. Faculty that are watching, I hope that you recognize this. Phase 3 is better not perfect, intentional not lucky. We're going to keep plodding along, we're going to keep planning, we're going to keep believing that better is possible. And what this looks like in Week 1 will not be the same animal in Week 3. I promise you that. If we're out that long, Week 3 will be better than Week 1, because that's the way we do our job. What can you do for us? You can be patient, you can be respectful of the monumental tasks that we are taking on here, and you can be kind, because the kids are definitely watching. And lastly, please be safe. So, in closing, and we... I'm trying to get back. There we go. I only do about 8 of these a day. You'd think I would be a little bit better at them, but... So, in closing, I just want to say thank you to everybody who has been working so hard. Thank you to my admin team, thank you to our tech leaders, thank you to our faculty who I know we're handing this off to, and they're going to run with it like the wind. I know they will, and I have all confidence in the world in them. So, I also would like to thank the very stealth sidewalk chalk artists who decorated our sidewalk outside of the admin building this afternoon with lots of uplifting, lots of love, and it really lifted everybody's spirits. I don't know who you are, but we love you, and we thank you. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Any board members have a question for Heather?
I, I have a quick question, but I don't know if Heather has the answer, but hopefully somebody will. Can you clarify Gertrude Hawk Pickup? Todd, maybe you can clarify. I know I seen him on earlier. For IC and for the Primary Center, there seems to be a lot of confusion.
Todd, you're unmuted.
No, he's still muted.
All right.
And he'll just say, "I really don't have any answers."
No, he will.
He does. Because I think he did an amazing job putting it all together.
Yeah. I delegated that to him, and there he is.
PC Pickup, PC Pickup, Primary Center Pickup, 10 till noon. Intermediate Center Pickup, 2 to 4 tomorrow.
Okay, now, what happens for those essential parents that are still working? Can they make arrangements with someone else to get their stuff?
Oh, sure, yes. Yeah, or they can call my cellphone number, they can have a parent pick them up for them, whatever, whatever they need. I think, I believe the, the message out there last night included my cellphone number. They call me, and I'll get them their Gertrude Hawk chocolate.
Okay, thanks, Todd.
You're welcome.
And Todd, this is Shane, just for clarity, both of those pickups are at the high school, just so everybody knows. So, those times are unique to those particular grade levels and those buildings, but all the pickups are being held at the high school.
If, if by chance you happen to have a, have a child at both buildings, just show up at one of them, and we'll find the other box for you. You do not need to make 2 trips.
Perfect. And I also want to send a huge shout-out to Elk Lake. I know, I heard from a couple parents that are very impressed. Their O-Tech students received their information today, and they're working in groups of 25 online to complete some projects that was assigned to them. And I know New Story sent out their enrichment packets to their students. So, those 2 places that we have students in are currently busy at work.
Any board members have comments or questions?
I think once we become professionals at this, that with the amount of people that are involved in showing up for this meeting, we should consider doing this like once a quarter or something, even without Corona.
Anybody else? Okay, any public comments? Again, I will tell you to paste your name in the chat box, then we will unmute you.
Some of them are saying the chat box isn't working. I don't know if anybody's getting anything.
Can you open it?
It's open now to host only. They should put their name in there, not questions.
Right.
That's their name, yep.
So, the chat box is open, but all they should be putting in there is their names, and then we will unmute them. Folks, this is not my rule, this is the way we have to do a public meeting online. You have to be able to speak.
Heather, I have another question. Or maybe Jill Cormis will have to answer this. What is going to be, do the families have to pay for the Chromebooks? They do not, correct?
No, no.
Okay, and when this is over, they just hand them in? Are we sending out any contracts or anything if there's damage to them? How is that going to completely work?
There is a, there is a, an acceptability of use form. There's going to be some, there's going to be something that the parent has to sign.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks, Heather.
Though I think we should still unmute Joe, because he's in the Batcave, and his little picture thing on the side, and that's the only way we could all get to see it.
There you go, he's unmuted.
Hello, how's everybody doing? Yeah, we have some, we have a form that people sign when they pick it up, and it'll be, it'll depend on the damage that's done to the Chromebook, but we got everything covered in that area.
Okay. Can we bring Todd back a minute? I have another question for Todd. Todd, what's going to happen with caps and gowns? Or that's a piece of the unknown about graduation, correct? Okay.
Yeah, yes, we continue, the, the wheels of graduation continue to roll. You know, a lot of those arrangements are made this time of year.
Right.
Those wheels are turning. What's going to happen 2 months from now, down the road? But yeah, we will continue to reach out to the students and the parents, keep them abreast of caps and gowns and invitations, but there's a lot of unknowns. I would say that the more people that we get involved on this online stuff, the better network of communication we're going to have. So, I think 2 weeks from now, we'll have a really strong tool for communication.
Perfect, thanks, Todd.
I'm not seeing anything up, okay.
Do we have somebody?
Can you hear me?
Yes, Tiffany, we can hear you.
Fabulous. I just have 2 questions. One question regarding my oldest, he was doing dual enrollment credits, so I wasn't sure how that was going to take place regarding all this.
Okay, so that's a really good question, and I don't either. A lot of that's going to depend on the college, whether they're going to give him, we're going to give him credit, obviously, for the course. And I would expect them to, I, I don't think you should worry about it, but I haven't, neither they nor we are that far along.
Okay. My second question, if my children don't get the Chromebooks, we have laptops or iPhones or iPads, are they sufficient enough to do this work?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely, thank you.
I had actually read online for other people that are using different online schooling platforms, that even things like a Playstation or Xbox One, like some of the more current things, you can even get onto those programs through those devices.
Fabulous.
Thank you, Tiffany.
Thank you.
Do we have anybody else with a question?
We're unmuting somebody else. Allison, can you hear me?
Yes. Okay. Hello. First of all, just thank you to all of you and all that you're doing, because, you know, honestly, this school district is amazing on what they're doing, because I know a lot of school districts that, especially in Lackawanna County, that are not doing half of what you guys are doing. So, my youngest is in 8th grade, and they had already been assigned Chromebooks. Now, she was wondering, because I didn't get any information about it, so she was wondering how would she go about getting her Chromebook, I guess?
So, though, Allison, those are the, those, all the Chromebooks are the property of the district, and we basically, if you look behind Todd, you can see them all. So, she's not going to get her own Chromebook back. They've all been wiped, and they've all been, you know, ready to redeploy.
So then, my question is, how would she go about getting one? Because I wasn't, as a parent, I wasn't given any disinformation.
Okay, so last...
So, I'm giving, if you can send me an email about that, that'd be great.
Great. So, last, Allison, last Friday, yeah, last Friday night, I sent out a communication to parents. It is on our website, so it was sent out on, on March 26th. You open up that letter, there is an email address, it says "need Chromebook." You email that address, the information that it asked for in the letter, and the tech department will reach out to you, and they will help you get a Chromebook.
Okay, fabulous, thank you so much.
All right, thanks.
Do we have anyone else?
Yes, we do.
Okay, good.
Karen, can you hear me?
Hello?
Karen? Yes.
I was wondering, students are going to review material, like the brick-and-water students. Are the cyber students through the school district also able to go back and review older material or material that maybe they were behind on?
Yes. Yes, Karen.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have more?
I think so, Phil, just a second. I'm having a hard time hearing Mary Jean. Mr. Evans, can you hear me? Kevin, can you hear me? Mr. Kevin, can you hear me? Hello? Patricia Stone, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay. What can we help you with?
How are you?
I'm fine, how are you?
Great. Um, I've, so the first question I have is, I have 5 children in school, 4 of my girls go to Toncanic, and my son is in Toncanic District, but he goes to Elk Lake School District. My question is for the Chromebooks. Now, we don't have like laptops and tablets. I have 1 computer right now that I'm trying to get all five of them on. So, I did sign up for the Chromebooks, and you said it would be 2 per household.
Right.
So, considering that for my girls through Toncanic, when I talked to Elk Lake, I was told today by his, we just got like a behavior, a behaviorist for him and a blended case manager, and they had told me that Elk Lake is now also doing computers.
Okay.
His programs would not be accessible on a Chromebook anyway through Toncanic, because he has Google Classroom through Elk Lake. So, it's possible to get him a computer through Elk Lake, even though he's technically considered Toncanic District.
Yes. And, and if they can't help you, Patricia, get back in touch with us, okay?
Okay.
And because we'll, we'll figure something out.
Okay.
Okay? Thank you. Jennifer Zander.
Hi, Heather, how are you?
Hey, Jen Z, how are you?
I'm doing okay.
I'm having a hard time hearing Mary Jean, she's yelling it to me from the other room, practicing social distancing.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you, what's up?
So, I have 2 things. First of all, Logan is in the STEM Academy, and they use the Canvas.
Yes.
Will they use that for 7th, or will they use the Edmentum?
They will use the Edmentum, Jen.
Okay. And then, my second thing I wanted to point out as an employee, and you referenced this the other day in our meeting about the mental health needs, and I don't want to underscore that, and just that there are resources. I want community members to know that there are resources in our community, our school community, as well as our local community. But this is a time of crisis, and I know you, again, spoke about in our faculty meeting the other day, and I thought that was so important to mention this evening as well.
Thanks, Jen. What she's referring to is, I talked with the faculty about the fact that the mental, we can make up academic losses. The mental health piece of this is really critical, so I don't want anything that we send home to be like battle material. Parents and families are having a hard enough time right now, so I just asked the teachers to be reasonable about their expectations. And we just feel like that is really important. And I also think that if you're worried about your kids at home, you can always call us, and we'll try to either hook you up with services that we provide, or we can try to point you in the right direction in the community where to find help, because this is a very unsettling time for the kids and for the adults. Because this is a very unsettling time for the kids and for the adults. Samantha Ball, can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Okay, how can we help you?
I was wondering if the teachers, some of them would be using Zoom as a meeting area for the students.
Okay, Samantha, that's a really good question. So we're still trying to figure that out, whether that's a good thing for our teachers to do or not. So what I've asked them to do is not to do it the first two weeks just because I want to get some more information on whether it's safe for teachers to use.
Yeah, my sister's a college student and her professors use it, so I was just wondering about it.
Yeah, we're considering it. We're considering lots of different ways, but right now I'm just trying to get, I want to make sure that it's safe for our teachers to use.
Okay.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
All right, Melissa is our last person that wants to speak. Melissa, can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Okay, we can see you.
Yay. So my question was, you mentioned earlier that there was an email we had to reach, to send to reach out for a Chromebook.
Right.
I called last week and then you said that they were going to try contacting us back. I have not been contacted back.
Okay. My guess is because you provided all the information that you needed and so they didn't feel the need to call you back, but they will be in touch, right, for when you need to go pick it up on Monday or Tuesday.
Okay, so I just wait for a phone call and then I call them one of those days?
Yes, they'll tell you when to go, okay?
Yep, thank you.
Great. Any more? Phil, it appears that there are no more in the chat line.
Okay, thank you. Do any board members have anything else they'd like to add or questions they'd like to ask?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. We have motion and second to adjourn, so we're adjourned.
Thank you, guys, thank you so much.
Thank you.